May the pleasure.
Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the beautiful and liberating justice for all.
I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. President, Darrell Wavers, Chris Matthews, Steve Moros, and Doc Vance is home. All right. Approval of the minutes. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session. Lincoln County Commission meeting was held on September seventeenth.
I'll say no.
All right, and on second. Any further discussion? Those who favor play aye.
Aye.
With that being announced, motion carries. Uh, let's see here. We're in public comment. Um, Loretta Robinson, oh, they've already gone. Um, Loretta Robinson stopped in while we were in the interim. I spoke with her. She's on Nine Mile, and they are trying to get water to five houses on Nine Mile. And they brought a cost estimate of how much it would cost to lay a two-inch pipe and what the tax fees were. And I was, I told her that we might be able to call the Lincoln PSD and ask if they might be able to add supplement on to the, uh, to the project that they're currently doing. Maybe help fund this. So I was gonna give this to Mary and get the phone number to the Lincoln PSD, and we're gonna call. See if we can get somebody to.
Okay.
All right. That's the two copies.
You want to give a copy?
Next, we have Buddy McCorr regarding Thresher Engineering and Water at the Alcoa area. And Versi Sims is here. She's gonna talk to us about that.
Yeah, I should Mr. Matthews' email I got from Buddy. He could make it, and he asked me to address his absence. If you need the email, please do, personally.
The, uh, I'll be talking with Versi and looking at the email. Whenever they, I guess when Buddy and Buddy.
Let me read this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Dear Versi, and I am on the agenda of the Lincoln County Commission meeting to be held this Thursday, October first. Due to a conflict with my schedule, I will be unable to attend this meeting. Would you please represent me in my absence, enclose their documents from my negotiations with the district on the tank site, right-of-way, and water to my house? I clearly have been victim of false representation in my conversation concerning the right-of-way of both the tank setting and the line laying of the water line to my house. And there is, uh... Here's the papers that he, uh, it's upside down. When they negotiated.
Versus, his, his, right here. And there's a tank. This is where the tank is. As you're going up the mountain.
The tank's already there.
They're rushing for it.
The, the, the site, he actually took, probably a year and a half ago, uh, they were negotiating with Buddy for the place, and they hired him to do the road excavation and the road and prep the tank site for the cord drilling and that. So he did all of that. And, and you can see, they, they clearly have the line on there, a one-inch service line at his property up the hill. And that was included in the appropriations and the six point nine million dollars for the project.
And they've already laid this line?
No, that line, they're not laying. Now they're, now they don't want to honor that, and that's a contract. Well, I looked at that, and when he called me and told me, he said, "I found, when I went through my things, I found something I want you to see." So when I seen that, and then there's three other attachments there of pages that it shows where they're going across his property, the ones that are highlighted, that he didn't even, he just gave them the right-of-way. He didn't charge them for that. And they're going across his right-of-way. So I, I had to look at the engineering book of the whole project when we started the sign-ups that Thresher Engineering gave me. Work, I decided to go to page sixty-nine and see what we had. So this, here's the engineering book, and then it's the cabinet you wrote it on there. So it was clearly from the onset of the project and the appropriations for the money, it was a part of the project.
Well, I think we oughta just write a letter to the Lincoln PSD and the Thresher Engineering, asking them to honor this.
Absolutely. I think that, uh, I think, uh...
So is the tank, that's his house? Is that what you're saying?
I've never been there. I don't know. I know it's on cabinet you wrote it.
Yeah, he lives up here. The tank's gonna be sitting up here.
Right by his house. Well, it looks like they have one.
Well.
And they're gonna have to be, they're gonna have to be on that road all the time because, because of the tank.
Well, we'll get a letter.
Okay. And Thresher, I don't know, because I had a call from Jonathan myself saying they'd found the money, and then all of a sudden it goes to my head.
Let's make a copy. Can we make a copy of this so we can include it?
Yeah, I have one.
Versi knows this. I think she dreams about it sometimes. She knows it so well. Have they started up there or do you know or plan?
Yeah, it's, it's, the lines, lines are all in. They, they told him probably a month and a half ago that when they got the lines in, they'd come back and they'd look and see if it, see if it was feasible. So then it was resolved, then it wasn't resolved, and now it's back, it's not resolved, so.
Thanks. Versi, you have something else you want to talk as well?
Yeah, I do. I was gonna add, hour and a half yesterday, I was on the phone with the DNR. Here is our boat ramp from the project.
Is that the one on West Fork? David knew what was telling me about it.
It is absolutely awful. This is a park that is just, here, this, here. It's, it's totally, look at the boat ramp. How could you get a boat in there? And look at the boat, look at the, the slips, the, look at the strips, too. It's a grown, it's, 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 it's awful.
It's the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Did you talk to, did you call Mr. Austin, or did you call?
I told everybody. I'm going to Charleston tomorrow. I have just, this is just, because they passed the buck so bad, they said, finally, this, this is, our district is in Point Pleasant. Now they say the disc park is handled through Nitro through the Law Division. So, so what does Law Division have to do with maintenance? I mean, it has totally been abandoned.
Well, they have a maintenance crew over there, don't they?
It's not, it's not been touched all summer. Nobody can even get, the boats don't even come in here. Both, there's been no fishermen there because they can't, the roads are not maintained to it. The park is not maintained. And it's a part of the Upper Mudd River recreational area.
Well, let's get a letter out to them.
And I have, um...
Is this a copy to Versi?
Those are yours, yeah. And this was a twenty-five million dollar project, and right here it says... That it has, uh, on the left fork, which is accommodate fifteen vehicles, are available for voters. Up here, this is, so, and it's...
You got a contact person?
Which one? From where?
Um, the, the DNR right here.
Well, you know, they tried to refer me back to them. I don't think Karen McCorr is there anymore. I think it's a new person, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's the boat ramp on left fork.
Correct, correct.
David was telling me about it, but I wasn't really clear what he was talking about.
I haven't talked to David about it. I'm glad to see other people are concerned about it, too.
He mentioned it after the meeting last night.
Oh, okay. Because if you look at, you see that picture of the bridge, I mean, there's even grass and debris growing on the end of the bridge to show you how neglected it is.
And the road as well.
In the road.
Thank you, Versi.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, Kathy Elliott. Welcome. I just got your, I saw that you called.
Yes, I'm sorry.
They're always like.
Hi, uh, this is Carlos. I'm... Mine?
Yeah.
Um, I have a couple of things this evening. This is the commission's copy of the, um, application that went in in May. I'm a little delayed here, uh, for the Lower Mudd Water Project. And there is a copy of the letter that you received and the development office acknowledging receipt of this application, as well as a copy of the, I contacted the Health Department before I submitted this and asked them to give me an updated letter on the conditions of people's water in that area. I think it's a much, uh, different person there now. I believe it's a much stronger statement about the need. And, um, I know that Michael Sharico from Evan James' office has spent a good deal of time up there in the area talking to the officials and the businesses. And he and I have talked about it. I may, um, contact Rick Roberts and see whether or not there are some items that have progressed toward readiness to proceed on the project that we, uh, they want to, see if we can get any, um, we don't want to soon to keep them updated on the progress of the project because, except for the one point five million from small cities, the project is funded. And it's, this is not the first time that this is going in. It's probably the third or fourth time this is going in, so we're...
But it's in.
Yeah, oh, it's in. We're very, um, hopeful, and I did pretty good time as well. Let's, let's see what we can do. The next thing that I wanted to speak with you about, and I apologize for not getting here sooner, but I have a lot of places that meet on Thursdays, and it's just like the dark word sometimes. Um, I went ahead and made copies. After the last time I talked with James Bush, who is the state ARC rep in the Development Office, um, he came back to me with, um, this, this... We have been fortunate. I've been working with Commissioner Matthews and Mary on this proposed project idea for, oh, probably seven or eight months now. Um, and the ARC is just a little, you know, kind of slow-moving, but there were only three counties in the state of West Virginia that were eligible for some special money that would come directly from the federal level in DC, not through the state of West Virginia's office, for digital learning opportunities in counties that were, um, partially impacted by the downturn in the coal industry. And it is to develop and provide digital learning, especially targeting miners who need to be sort of retool and get up to speed on technology and also that it makes them more employable and, uh, able to move into other fields of endeavor. But it also then can be directed toward, um, the rest of your unemployed population in the county. The commissioner has worked tirelessly on getting the information and figuring out how to make this, you know, come together. It would be, uh, done at the day report center, and, um, you can see what the, the budget amounts are, and the match on that would be done through, uh, in-kind. There isn't any cash from the county that's anticipated at this point in time. Um, they would want a letter of support from you all, and I know that that would not be any kind of an issue. I emailed James to see if there was anything I could update you on, like, right now. And, um, said that with, uh, the end of the fiscal year, um, federal fiscal year, and the fact that they just made their regular ARC grant announcements about a week and a half ago. This is already in DC. It's being reviewed. He thinks that we will hear something before the end of the year as to whether or not they will invite us to submit a full-blown application. I think we have a good shot, but I'll stay on top of it with him, and he feels warm and updated on it. But I'm, um, I think it's an exciting opportunity for you, and I really hope that we can make this come together because it would, it would just serve so many people, and we see this need everywhere. Training of a skilled workforce, and if we can't use the technology that goes with today's functioning, it is really a handicap. And along those lines, you know, moving further forward, uh, we're seeing a number of agencies with broadband initiatives, and we're trying to see, you know, how we might take advantage of some of those because, um, there's no place that we work where people have the kind of bandwidth and the speeds that the FCC talks about being the minimum to be able to. And if you can't access the internet reliably and quickly enough, especially in corporate situations, it's very difficult to participate in the local, state, national, or forget the global economy. You just need to be able to utilize that technology to really fully engage and market your business and your products. So, um, that's something that we're, we're paying close attention to. You have any questions about the programs?
No, I'm just, I'm glad that it's in DC.
Yeah.
So, um, I really appreciate that, that you did.
Oh, my goodness. You did, you guys did all of the light work. You just, you know, fed me everything, and you write so well. So, um, yeah, it's been, it's a very much a team effort, and I think that usually those are the most successful kinds. Everybody's been a little worried. Yeah, and I just see if there was something else that I brought up that I wanted to mention, but if it comes to my, uh, pass me a note or something.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you for your time. Sure.
Next, we have Greg Miller, the Human Resource Development Foundation. Spoke with Greg early, earlier, uh, before the meeting, and, uh, would he have some opportunities? If you'd like to come up and talk to, talk to us about that. Some opportunities for maybe some temporary employment displays workers, uh, that are gonna be doing some stringing, which maybe you need.
Well, my name's Greg Miller, and, uh... Anyway, uh, I got hired on as of Monday for the state, and, uh, here's a, uh, little newspaper that they, uh, sent with me. But what we're doing is, is we're, uh, introducing to the counties, uh, like you're sitting on the same, uh, dislocated workers, people that, you know, I'm saying, uh, got laid off, uh, or, uh, haven't had a job. And, uh, it's not a, uh, you know what I'm saying, it's set time, it's the grant. And, uh, but anyway, uh, the jobs, you know what I'm saying, they average from around fifty to eleven fifty an hour. And that's thirty-five hours a week. And I just wanted to come over and, you know what I'm saying, which, uh, who was at the time the, the one there earlier who was talking about? Uh, he, oh...
Oh, yeah, Alan Holder.
Yeah, he was the one that, you know what I'm saying?
He worked at Six.
Yeah, and, uh, but he signed it there. But anyway, they just wanted me to come and speak in the commission and see if you all could maybe help us with that, you know what I'm saying, with some things like the garbage and everything, but which I then spoke to you about. You gave me some numbers, contact people.
I, I gave him Rick Helms' phone number because, you know, this is definitely gonna be the floodplain. Uh, Rick could be able to help him and show him around the sports, the different places that we've been impacted, so did Allen and David Webb with the, uh, litter, litter control. He's also in the conservation district, so.
Is your grant for a specific area, or is it just, do you already know where you're gonna be, or?
Well, it was introduced, uh, like I'm in region two, which I've got Campbell, Lincoln, Lane, and, uh, Putnam County. And the streams that are on the, uh, agreement or whatever, uh, they're subject to change because, uh, the streams that are on there, uh, they might not be, need as much attention as this other stream. But if I could get with, you know what I'm saying, like David Webb or one of the floodplain control, and they could take me out, and, uh, he might be able to, you know what I'm saying, add some streams to it. Or, you know what I'm saying, say, "Well, this one don't need as much attention. This one here needs it more." And they can add, you know what I'm saying, whatever, you know what I'm saying, streams on it.
Well, I think that's important.
And it's...
You have, you have this phone number.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure that he'd be more, more than helpful, sure you, every time.
Did you already have people hired to do this, or?
Uh, what is the process is, is, uh, they have to go to the unemployment office and, uh, and register, and it's with, uh, through, uh, workforce. And, but I had a, a worksite permit, and I didn't know about the worksite provider agreement. And, but here's the streams that they've got on here now, as far as the ones that they're going to, uh, work on. But I've noticed a lot of other streams, you know what I'm saying, in the county that needs a lot of attention, too.
So these are the four main ones?
Well, that's, that's what they got on there now, but they said them subject to change.
Was it Hager Creek on there?
Uh...
Was it one of them? I know there's been some major development going on over there as far as, uh...
Yeah, but, uh...
Big Ugly, Derrick Span, Horse Creek, and Merritt's Creek.
But those are, like I say, that's the reason they was wanting us to get with somebody like, like you're talking about David way over the flood. Yeah, and that way they can, they more, know more about the county than, you know what I'm saying, anybody else would as far as that goes. And maybe they could, uh, take me out, or we could maybe get together and go out and look at the streams, and he might say, "Well, uh, Big Ugly Creek, they don't need it. Best go to Ten Mile or, or whatever."
Now, a few years ago, oh, that was probably two or three years ago, down, um, just on Route Three there, the creek, they cleaned it out, but it was just brush. Is that what you're gonna be?
Well, we're gonna be...
Like dredge or anything else?
Right.
Are you, is that...
We're not gonna be dredging. We're just gonna be, uh, getting the debris out of the creeks, lack of, uh, trees that's all, you know what I'm saying, across the creek. We'll be cutting that tree up. And that's where I was actually telling you about getting the permits from the DNR because, uh, we only have so many hours a day that they're all, you know what I'm saying, that perform work, and the burn, the burn time is between five PM and seven AM. Okay, we're not even gonna be out there at that time. And that's the reason I was trying to see how I could go about maybe getting a permit, because it does say on that, on this here, that you can call the state of West Virginia, and it says, uh, "Commercial permits to burn during prohibited areas." So I need, uh, you know what I'm saying, call them, see if they could issue me a permit because there's some stuff that's vulnerable, you know what I'm saying, trees and brush and stuff like that that wouldn't need to be hauled off. But the, uh, others, you know what I'm saying, wood, tires, and, uh, the garbage, and that was the reason I was asking you about if we could, you could point me in the direction of if we could get some help about getting the garbage, you know, if anything picked up and everything.
Um, did you, did, would, did we, did we put something on the agenda for next week, or something, so?
Uh, yeah, if, if, if we could, 'cause like I say, they're wanting to try and get this started as soon as possible. And this, right here, is what it is.
Okay. So bringing up between, yeah, Human Research Development Foundation. All right. I'll see if we can get this on the agenda for next, for the next, for the next two weeks. All right?
Okay.
All right. I appreciate you coming by.
All right.
Tell you what, you give Rick Helms a call.
Do you need this back?
Yes.
Oh, you did?
But you can, if you need to make a copy of it or something, you can.
Yeah, well, why don't we do that?
Okay, and then we can just put it on there, and you want me to come by, so we can send it to you.
Right. If, you know what I'm saying, if you wanna make a copy of it.
Can you, can you hold it till the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you stopping in.
Keep on.
All right. Call Rick Helms, David Webb, and, uh, they'll definitely help you out.
Okay, I appreciate it. Uh, while I'm up the court, could I mention something else?
Go ahead.
Um, I came over here, it's been, it's been five, six years ago, and I had a complaint. Okay, the stick replaced, those stick for the gas station in West Hamlet.
Stick for the gas station in West Hamlet.
Okay. Uh, that was when, uh, I guess Ms. Johnson wasn't here, and she was in here, but anyway. West Hamlet had ordnance, and they had a guy up there that opened a garage truck, and he had all kinds of vehicles. I mean, I'm talking twenty, thirty vehicles. Okay? So I brought it to the attention of the commissioner. That's what I was told to do. And when I came over, and I presented to them, and they told me that they didn't care. Well, I never did care anymore. But what it was is in the town of West Hamlet, if you've got three inoperable vehicles, if you can't take a car battery and take it out there and put it in it and start it, that you can have it. So anyway, they made him move all those vehicles. So I got lost.
You won, so?
I, I ended up with all of them, basically, because where my property is, I, it was in with my D. When I followed, you know what I'm saying, a right-of-way with my D. But I had to drive right through the middle of those cars. He's gone and sitting on both sides of the driveway. He has moved some of them out, but he's starting to pull some more back in. And, but anyway, it's a snake pit. There's a trailer they was living in, and I was out in the front yard one day, and all of a sudden I heard his trailer, I heard something fall, and looked up, and the trailer fell off the foundation.
Now, do you live over behind that garage? Is that...
Uh, no, I live at Midciff, at Stout Creek. They brought all the cars up to Stout Creek and parked them. I mean, which is on their property, but I have to drive right through the middle of them. My kid, you know what I'm saying, used to, uh, have to walk right through the middle of them. And like I say, uh...
Is it a, is it a salvage yard?
No.
Well, I mean, there's that ordinance over there.
There's a salvage yard ordinance in the county. That's what I was asking.
Hmm, no, there's no. And like the trailer that, that, that's there that they don't want to live in, I mean, it's, I mean, it's just all trashed up, and it makes my place look bad. I try to keep my place clean, but, I mean, as soon as you, people come down my driveway, they said, "Man, I'll do something about that." I tried once before, and I couldn't, you know what I'm saying, get enough of that.
Uh, David Webb is the litter control officer. He may be, because you're gonna be calling him around.
Yeah.
So he may be able to come in and talk to him about it. But that's who we would refer to.
And, and also the floodplain. It's in, it's in the road plain. Yeah, that's, uh, there's a floodplain on this as well. So you're talking to the two people. Why you be talking to them, you know, if you're riding around? You could talk to them about that, too. But I'll mention it to them as to what, I mean, I can't promise you anything right here. I'm just saying, but what we can do is try to point you in the direction, and, you know, we're, uh, she's brand new, and I'm kinda new, and we're trying, you know, trying to walk our way through this.
I'll just, I'll remind you, Steve, I'm brand new.
Okay, there you go.
So, but, uh...
But we'll see what we can do. I'll talk to David personally, and, uh, and you say that's where I...
It's in Stout Creek.
Stout Creek.
Yeah, it's right across from his place of business.
All right. All right. I appreciate it, Greg. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you. Thank you. Buddy, if you don't care, I'll just go ahead and say one of that.
This is a personal lady. Next, uh, we have...
Thank you for hearing me.
Discussion concern possible action. Ricky Dow regarding the farmland protection.
Yes, sir. Um, I don't have anything to hand out, so I'll just stay here. That's all right. Um, I wanted to, uh, update you all about what we're doing and what we think is gonna be happening with the Farmland Protection Board. Uh, currently, we've got a farm in the hopper. That means that we need to complete all sorts of federal forms and paperwork by two thousand sixteen. This is a farm that we would actually get eaten for. If we can't get that done, then we're gonna, the, the farm will go off the funding list. I'm anticipating it won't be a problem today that we'll be able to get that done. The other potential issue is back when the Farmland Protection Board was established in two thousand and seven. I think that people who are involved, and I think including the Academy Commission, although nobody up there was there, then, uh, had, and I wasn't on the Farmland Protection Board then, had the feeling that these easements were a fifty-fifty match. Fifty percent of the cost was gonna come from the county, and fifty percent was gonna be from the federal government. I'm not sure if it was a misunderstanding or whether it's just that... I'm not sure if it was a misunderstanding, or whether it's just that the federal laws keep changing. Every time there's a farmland bill, they sort of tweak the farmland protection board's ability and what they've got to do, but things have changed. Now, what the easement is, the easement is actually a payment to the farm that says that that farm, or part of that farm, whatever the easement is, perpetually has to say it has a farm. The farmer can sell the farm, the farmer can, you know, somebody else can inherit it, but that property can't be used for anything else but a farm. That's the process that we're in, trying to get this easement on this property. Where we are now, we have to establish some value for this stuff. And one of the things starts with what's called a yellow book appraisal for the farm, and the yellow book appraisal includes the easement. The Natural Resources Conservation Service, the N R C S, which is part of the U.S. Department of Agriculture in Morgantown, they can, are going to contribute the federal portion of the easement. And the way they figure the federal portion of the easement is they look at the aggregate of the soil in the easement. Different soils are classified as a higher value than other soils, so it's going to depend on the amount of property in the easement and the aggregate value of the soils, and that ends up with a price for that easement. And we're not sure exactly at this point how much that price is going to be. One of the issues, another of the issues, I should say, that we're trying to get solved, is that we're trying to get some of the, one type of the soils in this property reclassified into something called locally important soil, and that would increase the value of the soils in that easement, or in the process of trying to get that done. We've got around $249,000 currently assets. Originally, we thought our easements would be 50-50. It could be that in the end, we may have to use 60 to 70% of what we've got to purchase the easement, because instead of a 50-50 match, it could be as low as a 20-80 match. And we're going to know by the end of the year what this percentage is going to be, what the price is going to be, but, but the board felt it was important to come to the commission and give you all this information, because when this whole thing started, I think people had the expectation it was going to be a 50-50 match, and it's not going to be a 50-50 match. So that means that the money that the Farmland Protection Board has, the county money that the Farmland Protection Board has, is not going to go as far as we thought it was going to be, because it's not going to be a 50-50.
Can I say, I have to stand in on a few of these meetings, because you did a great job there, because, let me tell you, this is complicated.
It is complicated.
I wondered how far you were going to go into this. It is so complicated. Did you get the second appraisal?
The second appraisal?
They accepted it?
The second appraisal is not done yet. So we're waiting on the second appraisal to give us a dollar amount, okay? And then what we do is after we get the soils thing resolved, the state money, the federal money, they would say, okay, you know, appraisal was this much, we're going to give you X amount of dollars. But we don't want that issue.
So you're still waiting on the Pilzer God to do the appraisal?
Right.
Figured that would have been done by now, but...
Yeah.
So it will definitely be the first of the year, won't it, before you know it?
Well, it, it has to be by the first of the year, I mean, maybe before that.
Oh, it has, you have to have...
Well, I think we do in order to get all this stuff done by April, we would have to get it all, we would have to get the appraisal done by then.
Tell him how long you've been working on this. How many years on this one easement?
Is it five years?
It's probably been a little longer than that.
On one easement?
But a lot of it's because, I mean, there's all sorts of reasons, you know?
Like I said, it's so complicated.
We're learning as we do this. I, I guess the thing is that...
Everything, but every, every obstacle that you've had to cross, and we've been the first to do it. I mean, there's just been so many things that...
Because there's been so much stuff that's been specific for Lincoln.
With Mineral, the Mineral was a big hole down, so they don't own the Mineral on this farm, so that was an issue.
We jumped that earlier.
And then the appraisal has been, there's only supposedly one person in the state that can do the yellow book appraisal for conservation easements.
So, so I guess a question is, does the commission want us to move ahead with this?
Oh, gosh, I think you've put so much in it, that it would be a shame to...
It would be a shame. I mean, we would like to continue moving forward, even though it's not going to be this 50-50 match. And we just wanted to, as we keep, as we're pushing this to a conclusion, we'll come to the commission with an act, with, you know, an actual amount, with a proposal of the commission that we buy, we purchase an easement on this farm, and it costs this much money, but we, but it just seemed like a good thing to do, would be to let you know it's not going to be 50-50. And is the commission okay with that? Or is it like, wait a second, you said 50-50?
Well, let us know for sure when you get...
Well, do you want to wait the whole thing?
I think you want us to know the prices, so.
Yeah, you have two hundred... They have 240, 240,000, right?
Right.
And this guy, the prop, the landowner, he has really been invested in this too, hasn't he? It's just, I mean, it would be...
To Dr. I mean, can you say we should keep moving forward at this point?
Yeah, I think you should.
And then we'll just go ahead and bring you our proposal for the final package and...
Yeah.
That's the way to do it. Hey, Rick, we have on the agenda two for the farmland protection board, that's how many you need, am I correct?
Well, we could, we actually need three.
You need three, but I mean, we have two on the agenda.
We have two that will, we only got two applications, we only received two applications.
I think we need to run it again, though, because somebody may be leaving.
Okay.
Well, it's complicated, like everything down there, but I think we need to get another person, don't you think?
I just, it would be...
It is.
I think it would be good if we could run it another two weeks, and we will...
Let me ask you a question, should we go ahead and act on the two that we have?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just...
And they're pressed for one more.
That would be great, because that would, that would pretty much guarantee that we have a farm, you know, and make all these decisions.
That's good. Hey, appreciate it, Rick, thanks.
You're welcome.
Next, we have review and appointment of one member to the Lincoln County Plan Commission, Rick Ryan. I'll move that we accept Rick Ryan. Any for the discussion? You a favor?
Yes.
I am too. Rick's on there. Review and appoint the farmland protection board, we have Bruce Perry and David Vickers. You move on that?
Yes.
All right, I'll say with that, and I believe we're in agreement. We are. All right, so Bruce Perry and David Vickers are on the farmland protection board. We have no unfinished business, we have new business, we have bills, wills, and...
Bills and wills.
Bills, wills, and deals.
Bills, wills, and deals.
Another movie I saw once.
Play Strains of the Heart. All right, you've seen the new business, and I'm sure you've read, there's one we have. I move that we put it in this.
I'll second that.
Any for the discussion? You a favor?
Yes.
I am too. Next, open discussion, you have anything?
No.
I move that we adjourn.
This has been a crazy day.
Let me tell you.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right.
Let's go, let's go, okay.